Follow the meeting to order before the Sawyer County Board of Appeals. Today is December fifteenth, two thousand twenty at six P M. Our meeting is at Sawyer County Courthouse. The Sawyer County Board of, the public hearing before the Sawyer County zoning Board of Appeals is hereby called to order at six P M. in the Sawyer County Courthouse. Hayward Johnson, present on behalf of the board, Al Gerber, Steve Kelsey.
Do you want to roll call them on virtual? Pardon? If you want to roll call them on virtual.
Okay. Laura Russ, are you present virtually?
I am.
Mark Olson.
I'm here.
Gordy Christians. Dee Dobless.
Here.
Okay, we have a form and also on behalf of the zoning board, Jay Kozowski and Kathy Marks. Those persons who seek to get pertinent testimony will be afforded the opportunity to do so. As recognized by the chairman, that person will clearly state their full name before giving testimony. Each hearing will follow this order, reading of the application, submission of the file to the board, applicant's statements and presentation of evidence, testimony of those in support of the application, statements from persons in objection to the application, rebuttal as permitted by the board and decision by the board. Orderly procedure requires that each side shall proceed without interruption by the other. All testimony will be addressed to the board and there will be no questions or arguments between individuals. Any persons agree by a decision, the board may appeal the decision to the circuit court within thirty days of the date following the board's decision letter. The day following the signing of the board's decision letter is the first day of the thirty day appeal filing period. This public hearing has been published as a class two notice in accordance with chapter nine eighty-five, Wisconsin statutes and the Sawyer County Record and the Sawyer County Gazette. Public hearing will follow this order, variance application, new business and adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one variance application this evening. This is a public hearing in the town of Hayward, Hayward variance twenty dash zero zero four. Owner is the Big Fish Golf Corporation, part of the northwest one quarter to the northeast one quarter. Section thirty-two township forty-one north range eight west parcel zero one zero eight four one three two one two zero one. Twenty-five point five acres. The Big Fish Golf Club application is for the construction of a hundred and seventy-nine inch by a hundred and seventy-three inch freestanding sign. The proposed sign would be a total of two hundred and fifteen square feet as the entire portion of the newly constructed sign. The proposed sign would meet all other required setbacks in this proposed location. Variance was requested as section five point two one parent three type three of the Sawyer County zoning ordinance, which would allow for an eighty square foot sign in area when not lighted. Request is to exceed amount by an additional one hundred and thirty-five square feet or from Sawyer County zoning ordinance section five point two two class D, which would allow for a three hundred square foot sign, but shall only be visible on a U S or state trunk highway. This proposed, this property is located on county highway B. Request is to, using this portion of the ordinances, request is to view county highway B for having allowances that a U S or state trunk highway would have. By action of the town board, variance was approved, signed Dan Cousins, senior supervisor Gary Getheart supervisor. The specific type of sign is actually pictured on page twenty-nine of our comprehensive plan and is encouraged. Signed Bryn Hand Town Clerk. There were nine opinion letters sent out and I have returned one with additional comments. Are there other ones? Oh, yes. Yeah, okay, sorry, there were nine opinion letters sent out. I have no objections to this. Donald Thompson, I have now no objections to this. Stephen Bodenshots, I have no objections to this. Ellie Martin for Northwoods Industry, Inc. I have no objections to this Gregory or Linda Actor. And per the county highway commissioner, with a wider right of way in this area, the sign will not impact the highway. Signed Gary Getheart. As per the staff report to the board, I will, I guess, ask the chairman if you want me to read that into the record or if he just wants to ask me for additional discussion during that portion.
I think we can just ask you for additional discussion as the meeting progresses.
Very well, that is all.
Okay. Is, there someone here present virtually to represent the L C O tribe?
I'm here yet to represent Big Fish via Zoom.
What was your name, sir?
Indy Thompson.
Okay. Hey, do you have any additional comments to make?
Um, basically what I talked about in the other meetings about the sign. We, we kind of discussed to go along town of Hayward, have some sort of down lighting on the sign instead of up lighting, change it to down lighting. And that's basically it. Add a little bit more greenery on the road off of B there on hole three where it's just kind of plain right now. We're going to add some greenery to that as well. And that is basically it. Do you need any more info or?
No, I don't, but perhaps some of the other board members may have questions.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark. I have a question. Jay, we have eighty square feet in the variance application, but he just mentioned lighting. That reduces the size down to forty, doesn't it?
That would be correct. This is the first I was hearing that it would be actually illuminated as opposed just to the kind of more decorative lanterns that I had seen on the initial diagram.
Yeah, town of Hayward talked about that. I mean, I, I guess I'm neutral to everything, so we don't have to have down lighting on there. It's not going to be a huge deal for, for us as a business or me as an individual. That's just what town of Hayward recommended to me.
If there was lighting, then it would be downlight, is what they said.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I guess I had, this is Mark again, I guess I had one other question of zoning. We have in the application also or section five point two two class D signs. I couldn't tell from the maps. Is this sign located actually on the property or it looks to me like it's on like a little Outlots triangle there or?
Yeah, and I talked to Brian DeBries, our G I S technician, and we did grab some additional maps, which should be included in your packet. It is part of this parcel, but there's a road right of way that, that kind of bends right there at the start of the lot and they are tucking it in that triangle, which is on the other side of that road right of way, but still located on this actual parcel.
Okay, because then five point two two would not apply, wouldn't it? It can't be on the same property according to the ordinance as this.
I don't have a copy in the ordinance in front of me, but you actually might be correct there. Five point two two for billboards.
Yeah, it says.
Additional check in here.
Yeah, it says signs are billboards which advertise a general brand or product in the area of interest, a business activity or a service available, which is not in direct relation to the use of the premises on which it is located.
Yeah, so at that point, yeah, we wouldn't be able to use five point two two unless you made a motion as part of the variance request to also, you know, waive that as part of your variance motion that it is granted on that.
Okay.
That's the nature of variances and that you can, you know, kind of supersede those zoning ordinances.
All right, and then my next question, I guess, well, I'll start with Jay, but the applicant can also you may have more information. This is zoned P U D. And in our ordinance, it says signs are only allowed in commercial and industrial areas. Now, because it's a P U D and it contains both commercial and industrial uses, would it thereby be allowed in this zone district?
Yeah, and I initially saw that as well. That P U D zone district was added after the sign ordinance was already in adoption. And if you look at, if you look at the actual black and white of the ordinance, it does say C one and I one for the class C type three. But I think that was probably in air when the zoning ordinance had changed because P U D in all reality is somewhat like a commercial and industrial zone district. I do feel that P U D should have been added in that because you don't see P U D listed in any of those zone districts.
No, and I did note that it does say that for the industrial part, it should, it should, the C one rules will apply for the residential part. I forget which residential ones apply, so I just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you.
Any additional questions of the applicant from any of the board members?
No, none from me.
So I guess I'm confused. Is it forty square foot ordinance because of the lighting or is it an eighty square foot ordinance?
It would be a forty square foot if illuminated.
And was it the applicant's reply that it would be illuminated?
Say that again, please.
Will the sign be illuminated?
Um, if, well, the original plan was to have the two, the two decorative lights off to the side and then, you know, the town of Hayward wanted that to be switched to down lighting. So I guess I'm indifferent on, you know, what it has to be, so.
Since Mark, to follow up then, you do want lights on it. It's just which kind doesn't matter to you.
Yeah, doesn't matter to me. I mean.
But you want, you want lights, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if it's going to be a deal breaker, then we don't have to have light.
Well, it just increases the size of the variance is what it does.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, it would be nice to have some sort of lighting on there, yes, yes.
A one-sided structure, is that correct? Or do you see it coming and going on county road B?
Uh, coming and going.
So it's two-sided?
Yeah.
Going to be lights on both sides?
Yep.
Does the board have any additional questions of the applicant?
I do not.
I do not.
All right. Is there anyone else to speak on behalf of the application?
Not, not here.
Is there anyone to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, discussion by the board and decision by the board.
Well, I kind of, I like this style sign much better than I like if there was nothing else around this sign. It's kind of my personal feeling. It seems like that's the way a lot of stuff is going now, more decorative and, and fitting in with the the feel of what you're going to visit. So I do like that and going by the town's approval, it actually fits in their comp plan that that's the type of signs they recommend and the highway department chair basically said because of the right of ways, maybe this highway in the future, we should look at amending the ordinance for this for highway B, but he didn't seem to have a problem either, so. The lighting, I guess, all it does for me is it, it just increases the size of the variance, so that, that really doesn't matter much to me. I like the down lighting aspect that the town did. Yes, those are my comments.
During that we're setting a precedent here that because of this wider than normal county right of way, will the bait shop across the street want the same consideration or the body shop or the welding shop or the flower shop or any of the other businesses located along county highway B?
Yeah, that was, that was where my thought was going on it that maybe zoning has to look into, maybe county B needs to have a different zoning requirement on signage being it has, you know, different setbacks and, and other aspects to it. But yeah, no, I agree with you that even though there are some grandfathered ones in, are we setting a precedent for everyone to ask for the same thing?
Yeah, we have had internal discussions within the zoning and conservation department of doing a sign ordinance amendment, looking at for a road specific type of sign where a town road is allowed a certain size sign, that a county highway be allowed a certain type of size sign and then a state highway. And then you have county highway B, which kind of falls between what a normal county highway in this county is, is viewed as versus a state highway, so. Very interesting type of situation there for sure.
Um, I do have another question of zoning. This is Mark again. Are the setbacks on the state highways much greater from the right of way than our county ordinance?
The right of ways vary kind of tremendously depending on what area you're in. So I mean, there, there are a hundred foot right of ways along most of the state highways throughout the county, but then there's also areas where it becomes a hundred and fifty foot right of way.
And then how far back would the sign have to be from the right of way on the state highways?
As long as it's located out of the right of way.
Okay. And how far back will this one be?
That would be something I would, I would have the applicant answer. As long as he's at least fifty feet from the center line, he would meet the ordinance requirements of being out of the right of way, but he may have a specific setback dimension that, that they were looking at there.
I believe it's seventy-five feet off the top of my head.
Okay.
I think.
But it is out of the right of way then.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Did somebody say this was an expanded right of way? It is, yep. County highway B at least in this area is an expanded one hundred foot wide right of way. So fifty feet from center line on each side.
So you're saying seventy-five feet from the center line is what you believe it is?
Yeah, I, I believe that's it. I can double check on that too. But I believe it's seventy-five.
Then it would only be twenty-five feet off of the right of way.
I meant seventy, seventy-five feet from the, from the center line, so it would be, then it would be more than that. Have to be, maybe I think it's seventy-five feet from the right of way. That would sound better. Definitely more than twenty-five feet.
Okay. That's an aerial pull away then. Yeah, and that's kind of what the applicant had provided as far as the proposed location, you know, scale on that. Yeah, and I mean, if that's, you know, consideration, you can certainly make that, you know, part of your motion as far as, you know, what the, the distance would have to be from the right of way as to.
As opposed to the center line?
Correct. You know, if that was part of the motion, you would want to use some grounds as to determining that in that it would reduce highway safety aspects.
All right, so it has to be from the end of the right of way that it has to be fifty feet from that at minimum?
Well, it's kind of on the board's discussion right now to kind of determine what they're looking at as a right of way setback from a zoning ordinance perspective, as long as it was located out of the right of way, it would meet our zoning ordinance requirements.
Okay, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, on the maps that we have, is this the right of way line?
It is.
Okay, so this is significantly back from the right of way.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the scale, anywhere from thirty to fifty feet, it looks like they're off of the right of way. So maybe seventy-five from center line, twenty-five off the right of way is, is probably what they were visioning.
Yep.
I guess, Jay, from a zoning administrator standpoint, if, if this one did get approved and like Al and I were talking earlier, what does the zoning department's feeling on other businesses in the area like the bait shop there and all that stuff? If they applied for the same thing, what's your feelings as far as the zoning department? Would it fit in that whole stretch of other places came to us?
I mean, looking at that area in particular, I mean, there's some other already grandfathered larger signs out there. And if you look, you know, right across county highway K, that then falls within the reservation agreement boundary where we don't have local zoning control. You go further out on county highway B near the Chippewa Flowage and you have some extremely large signs that were grandfathered in as far as indicating the resorts that are out in that area. I know, are you setting any type of precedence with granting a larger sign request for this scenario? Potentially, but you could still look at it that it needs to line up in a specific zone district where I believe the bait shop is commercial, but the auto repair shop as of right now is not zoned commercial. The flower shop on the corner of B and county highway E there is not zoned commercial. So, I mean, they would have to theoretically rezone to a different zone district just to have the same type of precedent setting for that size of a sign.
Right.
You know, the stuff right across the road, though, most of that is zoned commercial, which I believe the town of Hayward is kind of wanting to keep that zoned commercial for future land use.
All right.
You know, and one other thing that, you know, I was kind of looking at during this process was, you know, what is actually viewed, you know, as the actual sign and potentially not supporting apparatuses. And I had had a conversation internally within, you know, the, the office staff and they said, yes, the, the whole thing should be classified as a sign, but you could look at it as this area is just the sign and the pillars and the lattice on the top are apparatuses of support. It's another way to potentially view this, but we ended up running as that, that entire thing would be included as a sign.
And I believe that's how it should be. Could get very, very elaborate with your supporting structures if, if they aren't going to be considered to be part of the, the total image or apparat- apparatus.
I'd agree.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I entertain the motion. If no one cares to make one, I could, I could take a swing at it.
Your turn.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the application as requested with the following amendments, that down lighting only be provided as part of the structure and that the structure be located no closer than seventy-five feet to the center line of county road B or nor, or nor, no closer than twenty-five feet from the, from the right of way as it currently exists. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote and we'll have to do it by roll call. All of us in favor of the motion as presented and seconded signify by saying aye. Mark, Kelsey said aye.
I thought you're doing roll call.
Oh, okay. All right, I will. Olson?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else want to step up? Laura Russk?
Yes.
Dee Dobless?
Yes.
Al Gerber, yes. Motion passes by a vote of five to zero with amendments. Findings of fact, it's been prior discussion approved by the local municipality, the town of Hayward. There's no changing use in the zone district. It does not create the visual impediment to traffic on, on B. And it's not damaging to the rights of other property owners.
All right, thank you. We have one late addition to.
Thank you, sir.
We have one late addition to new business. April of two thousand twenty-one, there is a county board meeting at six thirty P M. Where we also have a board of appeals meeting scheduled the same date at six P M. We can still keep that date if you want. I don't know if we'll even have any applications for then or we can move that date to another time. I know I'll be kind of indisposed with both and it becomes a little bit complicated for me trying to wiggle back and forth and we would most likely be done to be in the assembly room as well, so.
Yeah, I think delaying a week would be prudent.
For the twenty-seventh of April?
If that's, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but yeah.
I don't see anything. I would need a motion to move the April two thousand twenty-one meeting to the twenty-seventh.
I'll make that motion, Mark Olson.
I'll second it. This is Dee.
So, um, to April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty twenty-one, all those in favor of the motion, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All post same sign, motion to amend the meeting date is passed. Okay, all right, motion to adjourn.
I make the motion, Mark Olson.
I'll second that.
Olson and Kelsey to adjourn. All those in favor saying aye? All those in favor signify aye.
Aye. Aye.
Adjourn.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.